All right. Good evening. It is seven fifteen on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called order. I know I've read the language previously, but I'm going to reread it just because it's a new meeting of a new board. Speed is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access. To the chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised of this meeting. Now, communication during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anybody's making a private recording of this meeting, please notify the chair at this time. Seeing none enough the record that participated in tonight's meeting or myself, William Ramsey Chair, Board Member Liz Klein and Board Member Joe Fisher. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes for consideration this evening, which is the minutes of March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Joey, you ready to proceed?
I am.
Liz, ready to proceed?
Yes.
I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All is in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm gonna as well, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of MCC for LBD doing business as Boathouse Bistro for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for the Hingham Yacht Club Social to be held at the Hingham Yacht Hingham Community Center on Friday, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, from five P M. to ten P M. I believe we have Stephen McCauley, the manager of Boathouse Bistro, is gonna make the presentation this evening. Do we have Mr. McCauley on the call or the Zoom this evening?
I don't see him, though.
See him.
He's been asked to attend. I don't see him, though.
All right, then I'm gonna move to our next side, which is to consider approval of the agreement with C O C doing incorporated doing business as Indus for roadway by fiber reinforced method. Maybe you have town engineer J R Frye and Kathy Riley this evening are gonna make this presentation. I see Kathy. I don't see J R.
I don't think J R is available, but I think Matt was gonna join.
Matt, excellent.
I am here, yes.
Matt, certainly, we all know who you are, but for the public to state your name and position with the town, if you don't mind, and Kathy, if you can do the same as well. But Jack, Matthew, Matt, go ahead.
Matt Cahill, Assistant Superintendent D P W.
All right, tell us about this, this request, Matthew, if you don't mind.
So this is, sorry, this is to get us caught up with our paving program. This is a continuation of our normal paving. So this contract will address our needs for our top coats along with our crack ceiling that we do around town. So we've done a lot of paving the past two years, but we've had trouble procuring a contract. So this is solving that gap. Sorry about that.
And I can follow up with to say that the I don't want to say errors, but the delay in the contract was because it's a contract through the M A P C. It's a consortium of Hingham and several other towns that signed on to go to go out to bid for this this crack ceiling contract, and they award one vendor. There was delayed, and so we're just now getting it, and that's why we're doing the contract now. Um, it is a one-year contract with three with two extensions through M A P C. So we have to wait until they extend it each year before we can then amend ours to extend it annually. And I wanted to just let you know that because we got this so late, it appears that they they started the bid back in last July, and we're we just got it, you know, three weeks ago or so. And but they still kept the end date. So this current term, you'll see in that contract, is only through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and will be then extending it before then. We'll bring it to you before then to extend it through to the next July thirty-first. Because the M A P C promised me that they would be extending the contract well ahead of the well ahead of time. So I just wanted to give you that. The the amount that you're voting is for the full estimate of the year. Is it, and Matt might be able to back that up, but it's an estimate. And so when we amend it in July, it will only extend the duration essentially. And you can only do this work in certain weather, so it's not a year-round contract.
So Kathy, who's M A P C?
Metropolitan Area Planning Council. It's a Hingham as a member, and it's a it does a lot more than than contracts. Actually, that's probably a small part of what they do. But they, and maybe Tom can speak to that more. Policy and.
Yeah, sure. I know who they are. I didn't realize they did roadway reservicing work. Yeah, okay.
They do a few public works contracts.
And have we worked with this specific company before?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. And I guess you're seeking, we're seeking seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in services. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's because we're so far behind on the work. That's why the contract's so large.
Okay, all right, return to Joe. Do you have any questions?
I think Kathy answered it, but I want to be clear that if there's an extension that does not affect the dollar amount that's being approved.
There will be in July.
There will be an extension, but there'll not be an increase in the dollar amount being expended. Is that correct?
As far as I know, it's, I believe, D P W does an estimate based on what they can get done in the weather and timeframe, and because they're behind, I guess it's higher than it typically would be. So as far as I know, it will go through next July thirty-first with the amount, and I imagine that they'll come back in the spring, maybe next spring, if it if they needed more. That's all I know.
Well, to put it differently, so the dollar amount that we have in the contract is an estimated amount for a set of work to be done. And we only, I'm sorry.
All right, we we've already met with the vendor. We have a scheduled list with quantities and a plant, a plant set of streets of what we're what we're addressing. So they already know what we're doing for work, where they are in town, and what we're gonna do.
And Matt, will that money take us through next July thirty-first, or will you think spring you'll need more?
I have, we should be able to have, based on the meeting, the work should be able to get done very quickly. We're at the top of their list. We're just waiting for good weather. Once it warms up enough, they'll be able to start the project.
And then you'll start up again August first next year?
Yeah, that would be the idea.
So Kathy and Matt, I'm not sure I'm asking quite precisely the question I'm trying to get at. So there's a list of work that needs to be done, and presumably there is a dollar amount associated with each item on the list. And so once they do the first five items, they'll get the dollar amount associated with those five items. So what I'm asking is, is the seven hundred and fifty thousand cover all? If it if it's a ten-item list, covers all ten, and the extension would only address the time period when they do the work, not the cost associated with each of those items.
The the seventy, yeah, the seven fifty covers all the upcoming work.
Yeah.
That that that.
So the extension will only be time.
Work, yeah, all our new work and existing work to complete.
Yeah, okay, and then so and the seven fifty gets dispersed as the work is done. So you so you'll know, you know, if the if we've only got two projects done, and we are three quarters through the money, something's off.
Right.
Got it. Okay, you've answered my question. Thank you. Nothing else.
Or at the very least, unanticipated.
Yep. Right, so and.
There's any questions?
Just a question about the budget. Matt, so this was this was included in the F Y twenty-three budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and just so I just to build on what Joe was saying. So this will take us through F Y twenty-four or or the calendar year? What do you?
Through F Y twenty-four.
Okay, okay, all right, great, thank you.
Sorry, I think about it for a second there.
No worries. That's helpful.
No problem. All right, any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? Not seeing any, but that, yeah, well, Liz, I would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement Seal Coating Incorporated doing business as or roadway management construction surfaces, micro-surfacing and random crack sealing by fiber reinforced method in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Check it.
All is in favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Dominate as well, the motion carries unanimously. Kathy, Matt, always good to see you, Matt. Sounds like you got a full house here this evening. Luck.
Good luck with that time.
Guys, have a good night. Thanks for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do. It's always good time.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider submission of application to Plymouth County for sub-awards of American Rescue Plan Act grants for COVID nineteen testing, stormwater and sewer projects. Believe we have Michelle's gonna make this presentation this evening, and Tom's gonna assist if necessary. So let me turn it over to Michelle.
Sure, thank you, Bill. So we tonight wanted to ask for your approval to submit sub-grant applications to Plymouth County to access the ARPA funds that the county is making available to their member communities. There is a total of three point four eight million available to Hingham through the county, and we can use it for three of the four COVID, three of the four ARPA categories that are outlined in the federal guidelines. So the three article, the three projects that we're proposing, we use these funds for, as we've discussed, include the first one is getting reimbursed for the costs associated with the COVID nineteen testing center that the town ran at three thirty-five Lincoln Street in January and February of two thousand and twenty-two. That was kind of the last piece of a lot of our COVID response efforts for the community, and that's just under twenty thousand dollars. We are carrying those costs on our books as a receivable right now, so we are counting on ARPA funds from the county to kind of make us whole in that respect. The second project, and this is the subject of a warrant article this spring. This is the largest piece of over three million dollars. This is to support the sewer main replacement project on Route three A that the sewer commission brought forward in conjunction with Randy and Matt and their team this spring. So that is a multi-phase project, and the first phase of it, that's before town meeting this spring, seeks up to nine hundred thousand dollars for the design, engineering, and permitting work associated with that that will help define what kind of main improvements or main replacements might be necessary for the forcing gravity mains in three A. So the way that article is written right now, it's it's asking for an authorization to borrow, but any funds that we would get from ARPA through the county would reduce that borrowing. So we have enough to fully offset the cost of that first phase of the project if the board and town meeting approves that. The second phase of the project would likely come forward to town meeting next spring, so the spring of twenty-four. And this would to be, this would be to do the actual construction work to make the actual improvements or replacements of the mains in three A. And right now, it's a very preliminary estimate, but that could be between thirteen to fifteen million dollars. Part of what the the engineering and design work this year will do is help define that further cost of the construction next year. But the our sewer districts in town, there's two of them, only cover about a third of Hingham. And this is a very large project to kind of put on a relatively small group of rate pairs. So we thought that this would be a good use of ARPA funds, and it fits squarely in the category of investing in the water sewer and broadband infrastructure. So that's the second piece there. And then the final piece, we're hoping to use about four hundred thousand dollars for stormwater purposes. This is one of the things that Randy tries to accomplish through the D P W budget every year, but there's really no funding stream or revenue source associated with it the way that there is for the water system and to the and for the sewer system. So one of the things that we need to do under the federally mandated M S four permit, it we have to make a lot of repairs to our stormwater infrastructure in town. We need to map the system. We need to do public outreach efforts to try to make sure that we're minimizing the stormwater runoff as much as possible. And this is important because it helps prevent different kinds of pollution from getting into our local water bodies. So we'd like to use this funding to be able to complete or to design, sorry, to develop a stormwater master plan that would essentially be like a capital map for our stormwater infrastructure going forward and would outline what improvements we'd need to make stormwater-wise in town. So those are the three, the three main categories that we're seeking here. The select board, we did sign a grant agreement with Plymouth County last year to be able to access these funds. So what we would need to do going forward now is put together, they have a whole portal online where you submit for your project for for the reimbursement of these. Some of these are reimbursements, some are, you request them in advance, but we need to submit for sub-awards to actually access those funds. And they can be, they need to be obligated by the end of calendar year two thousand and twenty-four and then expended by the end of calendar year two thousand and twenty-six. So we have some time, but we'd like to get some of these things moving sooner than later, if possible. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was excellent presentation. Tom, do you have anything to add to that? I think that was pretty comprehensive.
No, I'm good.
Okay, good, all right. All right, a couple of quick questions from me, and then I'll turn it over to Joe this. I know that, you know, each municipality in Plymouth County had a certain amount of ARPA. Are we at the cap of that?
Yes, so this is the Plymouth County is making two different pots available for us. This is the cap of the of the pot of money that we can use for these specific categories. They do have another tranche of funds that we have used to support our budget, kind of a more general tranche of funds. But this three point four, three point five million dollars is limited to these categories, and it makes it a little bit. It's actually much more restricted, so it's a little bit harder to use.
Yeah, I remember it was like four categories, right? It was like sewer, it was all like infrastructure-related categories. Sewer, technology, it wasn't like ARPA where ARPA was kind of free-flowing. I'm sorry, the the previous federal funds.
Right.
Where we put toward other uses, ARPA had specific areas where they had to be used, and one was municipal sewer use, right?
Right, so the main category that we're using here is the water sewer broadband infrastructure category that you're thinking of. The other one with the COVID nineteen testing center is supporting the COVID nineteen public health risk, public health and economic response. At this point, kind of in the pandemic or post-pandemic, it's harder to use those funds because we use a lot of the CARES funding for those, the early costs associated in the first two years of the pandemic for that. The third, the third category is premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work. And the fourth category that you're thinking of as well from some of the other funding was lost revenue, sort of local revenue replacement. Plymouth County has some separate fund funding available for that, and much of that has already been used to support our F Y twenty-three budget.
Excellent. All right, well, listen, I am fully in favor of using federal funds to assist with this. What will be a pretty, pretty big lift on our, pretty big lift of a sewer project. So thank you for doing this, Michelle. Liz, do you have any questions for Michelle?
Just just one question. Thank you, Michelle, for the presentation, and I fully support, you know, doing these, moving forward with these projects using the funds. I think it's a great, great use of the funds and definitely a strategic way for us to use them. Do have we started the application process?
Not yet. We have all the information together for the COVID nineteen testing center, the cost, the invoices, et cetera. So that's a relatively easy upload through their portal once we get through this process. And then we're still doing some work with engineers and consultants to kind of define what we would need to submit for the stormwater master plan and for the sewer project.
Okay, very excellent. So what do you see as the timeline for that after this meeting?
Probably just in the next few months, we can get that done.
Okay, okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Joe, any questions?
I do, but thank you, Michelle, for a great presentation. My first question is, in what form do we get this communication from from Plymouth County that these funds are allocated to Hingham? Is it was it a letter of intent or sort of a general indication? Or how how certain are these funds?
They held a webinar maybe three weeks ago now or so for all of their member communities, and I had been, we had been in contact with Tom O'Brien, the Plymouth County Treasurer throughout this process as they were trying to make some decisions. But they kind of posted their their final expected allocation on their website as part of that webinar that shows the breakdown by community and in terms of different tranches and which funds we'd get. And then I've I've talked to Tom O'Brien this past week or so, kind of confirming timelines of, I wanted to make sure that the county didn't have more stringent requirements on top of the federal ones in terms of the timeline that we could expend these. And we confirmed with him that the use for sewer for COVID nineteen testing and for stormwater fits squarely within the categories there, so we won't run into trouble when we submit them.
Sure, but are are there contingencies that could result in a lower allocation to the town of Hingham?
I don't believe so at this time.
Okay, great. With respect to the stormwater master plan, is is it our intention to seek to do an R F P process to get folks to bid on preparing that plan?
We'll be working with Kathy Riley, our procurement and contracts manager, because for all of these ARPA funds, we have to follow the federal procurement guidelines, which, as you can imagine, are not the most straightforward. And sometimes the state ones that we typically follow are more restrictive, sometimes are less. So we're still trying to clarify what exact process we need to go through. Some other towns has you have used a request for qualifications process to kind of prequal engineers to work on this, and we have an example from Weemuth. But we're trying to make sure that we're following the right competitive process to meet the federal guidelines.
I mean, I, one of the factors that are motivating me is that's four hundred thousand dollars not to do any actual work on improvement. It's it's to develop the plan for that. And I just want to make sure that that's that that's a reasonable sum for the plan.
We're proposing that we pay for the plan first within this, and any remaining funds from that four hundred thousand, because I'm not sure it will actually cost that much, would be used to start doing the actual infrastructure improvements once the plan is is complete.
So what process will be followed to understand what a reasonable amount is for the plan?
I think once we go through whatever the procurement process is, whether it's just a request for qualifications, and then we get quotes from qualified engineers, or if it's a more competitive R F P process where we'd be evaluating both experience and prices for the plan. But we definitely want to make sure that we're getting the best price and experience possible to put that together for us.
Absolutely. I mean, absolutely, this is the way we should go, and and I intend on moving forward to approve this ARPA allocation. So thank you.
Just just want to clarify one other thing, Joe, for you as well. The the report that the the study that we're gonna get for the wastewater or for the stormwater work will be very heavy on G I S modeling. So it'll be more than a simple report. It'll be, there'll be a lot of technology and engineering that goes into modeling the work that's gonna need to be done.
Got it.
Yeah.
Outstanding. Thank you. All right, Clark, we do have a sewer commissioner on line today. Clark, do you have any questions or comments on this on this item?
Oh, I'm I'm very much in favor of it. I do have one thing about stormwater. One of the things that has come up, and we need to understand, is there may be some properties in town that are right now have illegal connections into the sewer system that could benefit possibly from the stormwater study that are said to be, you know, either built on ledge or floodplain. So I would very much like to see stormwater handling be documented. And we we have a clear direction, because I think that would help the sewer commission do its job and only treat wastewater.
So I could, yeah, I'm sorry. Now, as you say, I could take that, Clark. Thank you very much for the for the comment. I will say that Matt Cahill is still in the line, and he will be helping the the department manage that contract as it as it's awarded and and worked on. So thank you for that comment, and Matt, just make sure that we're assessing any illegal connectivity connections.
And I appreciate your help on this, too. Thanks.
I appreciate the great work you're doing on the sewer commission. Do you remember, any members of the public have any, I said, appreciate the great work you're doing on the sewer commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the public have any question to comments about this this agenda item? All right, see none, I would take a motion.
I move to authorize the town administrator to execute and submit grant applications and all associated documents to Plymouth County for sub-awards of American Rescue Plan Act grants for COVID nineteen testing, stormwater, and sewer projects.
Second.
All is in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
Dominant as well, the motion carries. All right, unanimously, I'm gonna go back in the agenda. I see that Stephen McCauley has joined us. So let me go back to a previously tabled agenda item to consider approval of the of the request of MCC for L B D doing business as Boathouse Bistro for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for the Hingham Yacht Club Social to be held at Hingham Community Center on Friday, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, from five P M. to ten P M. Stephen, welcome. Good evening to you. Can tell us about the event?
Yes, thank you for having me. I apologize for my technology. My kids are better than that than I am. That's why I was a little late. We are catering an event for the Hingham Yacht Club. I believe it's a social Caribbean night with a beer and wine license. We've, I believe, there's gonna be about eighty people. The party goers have been advised to use a public lot. If there's any other questions.
How many people do you anticipate attending the event?
I believe it's under eighty.
Oh, under eighty, okay, all right. And by understanding, Tom, that the chief of police has approved the event has no concerns with this. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay, Liz, any question to comment?
No questions. I reviewed the application, and if Chief Jones is fine with it, it looks fine to me. Thank you.
Great, Joe.
No questions. Looks fine.
Outstanding. Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this on this agenda item? See, none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of MCC for L B D doing business as Boathouse Bistro for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for the Hingham Yacht Club Social to be held at the Hingham Community Center on Friday, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, from five P M. to ten P M.
Second.
All is in favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Dominant as well, the motion carries. Steve, before I let you go, love your pizza.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I go there a lot.
Good stuff. Thank you very much.
All right.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a discussion and potential vote of F Y twenty-four budget, proposed budget and F Y twenty-four through twenty-eight financial management plan. I think Tom, Michelle are gonna take take us through this one. Let's go back to the, we gotta re-vote some budget items, I believe. So Michelle, you want us, want to walk us through this item?
Sure, now that the advisory committee voted last night, I just wanted to make sure that we are matching them exactly. The select board has taken two votes. You did capital a couple of weeks ago after the joint session. And then we asked you to vote the balanced budget and the recommended budget budget last time. When we were putting together the recommended budget, I mistakenly included, or sorry, the balanced budget. I mistakenly left out some funds or some items in the health budget. So the town is gonna get a lot of opioid settlement money that we are programming through the health department, and that's gonna happen regardless of the override or not. So that should have been included in the balance budget. And then Russell Tierney through the water department, he's requesting an additional position this year. And because it's being funded by enterprise funds and not the tax levy, that also should have been part of the balance budget. And then there were two other items that were kind of switched in the culture and recreation piece. So I just wanted to correct the record. It really doesn't change. It has nothing to do with the override or the recommended budget. I just wanted to make sure that the balance budget matched exactly. It has nothing to do with the override or the recommended budget. I just wanted to make sure that the balanced budget matched exactly what the advisory committee voted last night. So we've included in the vote list three proposed votes for just those three sections, sort of the categories of the balanced budget that were affected. And then I've kind of noted for the record with the what the new and correct totals would be for both the balanced budget and the recommended budget, which again, matched the advisory committee recommendations from last night.
Makes sense to me. Want to make sure everything is lined up. And so I don't have any any questions. Joe, any questions?
Yeah, one question. So we are changing these three numbers in the balanced budget.
That's right.
Correct?
Yes.
And how does that affect the bottom line? Because I remember Bill said the the total for the balanced budget is X dollars. So I understand that the new total will be 143, 471, 374. Is that the same number that Bill referred to on at our prior meeting?
No, it's actually more because the opioid funds and health and the water, the assistant superintendent should have been included in the balanced budget in addition to the recommended budget. So I wanted to make sure that they fit in there.
Okay.
And when, when, sorry.
No, go ahead.
When the select board voted the balanced budget and the recommend motion budget at our last meeting, it was exclusive of capital because you had voted that at a separate meeting. So the two numbers listed there include everything. All in for the balance budget, including capital and all in for the balance for the recommended budget included capital.
Got it. No other questions?
So thank you. Liz, any questions?
No questions. I'm clear on this. Thank you.
Okay. Everything makes sense. All right. So do any members of the public have any question to comments about this agenda item? Okay. All right. So obviously, I'm going to vote on two of the three. I need to recuse myself on cultural recreation as I have a spouse on the Recreation Commission. So I'll kind of take motions on on the first and the third. And Liz, if you could just call the vote on the second, that'd be great.
Sure.
So with that, I would.
You have a question, I think.
I'm sorry, I have a question. I do. Okay. I didn't see that. Oh, okay, there is a question. We do have a question. Okay, go ahead. Can you unmute? Someone on the phone?
It's Beth. Yep, I think she just unmuted herself.
Hi, Beth Rock, 36 Pleasant Street. I I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I was interested in how the town was going to vote Article Six at town meeting.
Okay, yeah. So I think that's a good question, Beth. We've been talking about that a little bit. Ultimately, how that will be voted?
Since we have. I can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so. So we've been, we've been discussed, we've been discussing that a lot. So ultimately, it's going to be up to the moderator procedurally how that's done. But what we anticipate how that will be voted, Beth, is that each each line item for both the proposed balanced budget and a potential override amount will be done individually. So and again, obviously, it's going to be Mike Puzo's call because he controls the procedure for it. But what other towns generally do is that they go line item by line item. So they go culture, recreation, police, fire, schools, and all of the other budget items like we do Article Six every year. They'll do the the balanced budget amount and then the potential override amount. And then what I think he'll do is if any citizen has a hold on an amount, that hold amount will then be debated and will go back and be discussed by the meeting. But we don't know that definitely yet, because he hasn't really told us what he wants to do. That's just what that's just tell some other towns to it. Tom, is that, but you agree with that, Tom?
Yeah, generally, that's exactly right. We did have a preliminary conversation with Mr. Puzo yesterday. He is still reviewing it and will will come up with his procedure at a later date. But that's right, we'll be presenting the balanced budget as in its entirety, followed by an item for the override that will be like, like Bill said, it will list all of the the necessary lines being called for in the recommended budget.
But since there are so many line items that get involved in the override budget, are they gonna? Does people hold all of the budgets that are in the override or?
That's what we don't know, Beth. I don't know if he's going to call the entirety of the override as one, or if he'll go line by line. Like Bill said, there's a decent chance, I think, that he goes line by line and will give people the opportunity to hold individual lines if they want to.
And that would be when people would discuss the advantages and disadvantages of both? Or is somebody going to present those?
That that is when the people will have the opportunity to discuss. And Michael will set the stage for the process that he's going to follow, like he always does. He's usually pretty clear about what he's anticipating happening.
Will people be told in advance how that's going to be?
Depends on when I, when we hear from him, I guess we can, we can try to do that. Sure.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And Beth, as always, you can call me if you have questions and you're looking for more information that for some reason I haven't provided you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
If I can just add, so to the extent that residents would prefer, you know, our recommended budget over a balanced budget, regardless of that preference, we have a statutory obligation to vote for a balanced budget, which doesn't mean that this board is advocating for that. But we do not have an option about whether or not we go with a balanced budget. That has to be an option.
We have to present the balanced budget. That's right.
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks for the question, Beth. Do any, any other members of the public have any questions? Okay, not seeing any. All right. Then with the first, with the first amended item, I would take a motion.
I'll move to recommend a fiscal year 24 human services balanced budget of 1,104,962.
Second.
All is a favorite, Joe.
I.
Liz.
Hi.
I'm an eye as well, the motion carries unanimously. All right, Liz, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to recommend an FY '24 culture and recreation balanced budget of $2,362,373.
Second.
And I'll call it, Joe. Looks like he froze. Bill?
I'm an abstain.
Abstain. Liz, I. Joe?
Fine, I think we should hold this item.
Okay, do you have any to do the next one?
No, I, so I think we can do them separately. So that's what I've been doing. And we're going to do is we're going to hold that separately. I'm going to go to the third one, because we will have a majority there. So that we can't vote that without a majority. So I'm going to make a motion. He's back. Okay. That's we're still on that one. So go ahead.
Joe, you're muted.
Joe, you're muted. You're muted.
Yep. Did you get my vote on last one?
We haven't moved on yet.
Yeah, culture and recreation, Joe.
I.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, I'm making a motion to recommend an FY, I'm sorry, I take a motion on the enterprise balanced budget.
I'll make a motion to recommend an FY '24 enterprise balanced budget of $16,454,253.
Second.
All is a favorite, Liz.
Hi.
Joe.
I.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries unanimously. I'm going to know for the record that the total for FY '24 balanced budget including capital outline is 143, 471, 374. And I also know for the record that the total FY '24 recommended budget, including capital outline, is 151, 361, 841. All right, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion of the FY '24, '28 financial management plans. Let me turn it over to Tom.
Great, thank you very much, Bill. Yep, absolutely. So thank you. This is very much the the whole discussion that we were having at the last meeting on the financial management plan. There's really only two substantive and clarifying language changes among some other grammatical improvements. So in the other commitment section under the eighth bullet, we added a line that reads, "The town will maintain unassigned fund balance in compliance with the town's financial policy." That was a recommendation that we heard at our last meeting. And and I sound like, I believe the board felt like it was worth incorporating. So we've done that. And then the other, the other item that was substantive in clarifying the document and helping us really to to be able to, the enforceability and actionability of the entirety of the document for next year and future years, we wanted to make sure there was clarity there is the item under commitments under the third bullet, section 1D. And it's regarding the out of district special education tuitions and special contracts. But Michelle is significantly better at explaining this than I am. So I'm going to chicken out and ask Michelle to do it.
Thanks, Tom. On that item, we just tried to add some clarifying language, and Joe really was instrumental in helping with this to just make sure that next year, when we're looking at this and putting our budgets together, that we know exactly how the the 2% increase in the special education out of district tuitions and specialized contracts line, how we would do that, so that next year, there's no confusion in terms of how that would be applied. So it kind of establishes a trend line above which the school department will use the reserve fund process to fund any costs above that line. And then below it, it'll be something that is below the 2% increase and would be handled within the school department budget.
And just as an overarching comment, I'll just state that this is a reminder. The document has a number of definitions to clarify again. The process, the overarching concept of this is that after this override being proposed here in this, at this town meeting in 2023, we would not need another override until, we would not request another override until FY '28. And along the way, the schools and the municipal departments would all commit to maintaining or not exceeding a 3.5% growth rate with with some obvious, as Michelle just talked about, some allocations for out of district expenses and the like. But those are, those are really the the broad scope, the broad spectrum kind of picture of what this document does.
All right, Tom, Michelle, thank you very much. I know we discussed this a pretty good length last week. There's been quite a bit of discussion of this financial management plan of last couple of weeks. I know I was involved with the discussions a lot with the forecast group and the changes that have been made over the last several days. I'm comfortable with the changes. Very happy with the the what's been put in there and where we're at with it. I appreciate the cooperation of those involved in getting this agreed to. The school committee has voted it unanimously. I, the advisory committee voted the budget, but they haven't voted the plan. Is that correct, Tom?
That's right. They'll they'll wait for this vote tonight, and then they'll take, they'll take up the the management plan as as approved, if this is approved tonight by you guys as well as by the school committee, and then they'll take that up tomorrow.
Okay, great. All right. Excellent. Well, I appreciate the great work you, Michelle, did as well. All right, Liz, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I've reviewed the changes. I think they only add clarity. So thank you. The out of district trend line, et cetera, makes sense. And just to note that in in the appendix B, it outlines very clearly the maximum operating budgets for municipal and school with the 3.5% growth rates. And you can see the the out of district tuition as well. So for each fiscal year, you can see the budgets that we're that we'll be talking about. So I think it's clear. I think it's comprehensive. I'm comfortable with it. So thank you for all the work that went into this.
Thank you, Liz. Joe, any questions?
No questions. I am satisfied with the letter. I think it makes the public commitment that this board and other boards will be making, which I think is necessary as part of the override process. So I am ready to move forward with this.
Great. Any members of the public have any question to comments about this, about this agenda item? All right, not seeing any, I would take a motion.
So I'll move that the select board of the town of Hingham vote to, one, approve and adhere to the fiscal year 24, '28 financial management plan dated March 13, 2023, attached here to, second, authorize the chair of the select board to execute said plan, and three, authorize the town administrator.
Do you want me to do it?
Be lost. You know, I'll do it. I'll do it. Because, Joe, I think we're losing you there. So, you know, I'll do it. Liz, I give you a break. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion. That select board of the town of Hingham hereby votes to, one, approve and adhere to the FY '24, '28 financial management plan dated March 13, 2023, attached here to, two, authorize the chair of the select board to execute such plan, and three, authorize the town administrator to manage the implementation of said plan on behalf of the select board in accordance with its terms.
Second.
All is in favor, Liz.
Hi.
I'm an eye as well. Joe?
I'm an eye. Sorry, I keep getting out of.
That's all right.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, you, you were voting in the affirmative. Is that correct?
I, I am an eye.
All right, the motion carries unanimously. All right. Next item on the agenda is a discussion and potential vote to include a question on the ballot for the April 29, 2023 town election regarding an override pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 49, Section 21C. Now, we have Tom here. Is John Cofflin joining us as well?
He is. Yep, he's here.
All right, here he is, John Cofflin. Perfect timing.
All right, do you want me to start?
Good evening. All right, Tommy, and you know, take the, John can take it.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'll turn it over to John in just two seconds. Just as a reminder to everybody for this, for the proposed override to pass, it needs to pass at both town meeting and at the ballot. And to that end, we need a special ballot question. I'll read that question now and then turn it over to John to explain. So it'll be question one on the ballot, which will be held again at the election on April 29. Shall the town of Hingham be allowed to assess an additional $7,890,467 in real estate and property tax, in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the up, the operating budgets of the town and the public schools for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023? John, you want to take it from there?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. The the language of the ballot question is taken directly from the statute. It's a majority vote, so it'll be on the the election the Saturday after town meeting. So depending on what happens at town meeting, we have the the election the week after. And we need both of those to pass in order for the override to take effect. But the language of the question is taken directly from the statute.
Okay. All right. Liz, any questions?
No questions. I looked at some of the the options, and I think this is the clearest and most straightforward. So I'm I'm comfortable with this. And just a, just a comment that if people vote early through the mail, that they may, they will see this question and be allowed to vote on this before town meeting potentially. So obviously, it has to pass at town meeting for it to be valid, but people should just be aware of that, that they'll see it on the ballot if they if they choose to vote by mail.
Liz, thank you. Joe, any questions?
Yeah, looking at the language, it refers to real estate and personal property taxes. Is there, in in our discussions, in our public discussions, we've always spoken about the impact on real estate taxes? How will this affect personal property taxes? The override? So, I, Joe, I'm not sure of the answer to that. I think we, I think that's something we'd have to check with the assessors. It, it sets the amount that we can levy, how that gets spread out, and the statute includes both personal and property. Um, so I don't know. I'd have to check with the assessors, honestly, Joe, to see if they include the personal property and the total tax levy for the town for me. I don't know the answer to that. Um, I suspect if they do, it's rather small. Um, yeah, I, I just didn't know to what extent there needs to be a discussion of the allocation between real estate and personal property taxes. I'm fine with this as, as the ballot question, but I just want to make sure that we can provide clarity to residents of this. That's something I think I need to confirm with the assessors office, Joe. Right, okay, thank you.
Joe, thank you. Uh, do any members of the public have any question or comments about this? Um, this gen, item? Okay, I'm not seeing any. All right, let me just turn to my colleagues here. All right, so, um, well, obviously, I think we need to just deliberate for a couple of minutes here. I know that we certainly have a couple of different options on how we, we propose, um, you know, the override question, and I think our discussion of this issue kind of started, uh, probably, it probably was in November, maybe early December, you know, where we could do different options to the voters. Um, my preference certainly is to do it this way, just to do the, um, the ba- as Joe just said a couple of minutes ago, um, the, the balanced budget, um, number, which we're obligated to do at town meeting, and then to do the question that we voted on. Um, I think if we were to propose differing numbers, I think it would create a significant amount of confusion among voters. Um, I think there's gonna, I think there's gonna be confusion as it is, you know, to the, to that question already, like, you know, how are we gonna do it as it is? I mean, even the way we voted last week, you know, it got a little got, got a little confusing, like, we had to vote the different numbers and the different line items and, um, I like, um, my proposal is to try to keep this as simple as possible, so that voters, whether they're for or against this override, know what they're voting on and make it pretty clear. Are they for the increased amount or not? So, when they go to, when they go to the, when they go to town meeting, it's gonna be pretty clear whether or not the, you know, the, for the balanced budget or, or the override amount. And when they go to vote at the ballot, either they're for question one or they're not for question one. I don't think you can be in any more simplistic than that. If we were to put different questions on with different numbers, I think it could be very confusing for voters as to what exactly they're voting on. So, from my perspective, I think we keep it with just the one question. Either you're for question one or you're against it. So, um, I would like to stay with this suggestion, but obviously, it's a majority vote of the board, so I'd like to hear what, uh, Joe and Liz think. So, let me turn to Joe first, and Joe, what are your thoughts on it?
I think this is the way to go. I mean, the risk to the town is, at town meeting, someone puts a hold on an item that's in our, um, override budget and it gets changed. And then the dollar amount that's on the ballot will not, will not be consistent with what was voted. Um, but I think we're covered, because I think this is an override that would be up to that amount, not require that amount. Um, so, um, I, I think this, this works. I think it minimizes the potential for, to confusion, and to the extent I think people are focused, focusing on it and are at town meeting, we'll have the opportunity to address their questions and hopefully answer them. So, I, I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Joe, thank you, Liz. What are your thoughts?
I agree. I think having the one question simplifies and streamlines it for the voter for sure, and, and it represents the budget that we're recommending for the town. Um, you know, I think we've already gone through the process of being very deliberate and not adding any redundancy or any waste. This, this is the number to deliver the services plus, you know, a few key strategic initiatives. Um, so, so in my mind, this is the, this is the one recommendation. Um, and I think it's, that is, I think that's how we can be clearest with, with the public and, you know, hopefully, they, they will understand that, um, and appreciate that. This is, this is the budget that is aligned with our master plan goals, our housing plan. Um, this, this is the number.
Um, so, Bill, I, I just wanna go back if I can.
Yeah.
So, so, to the language, it, it says, uh, be allowed to assess an additional, you know, the 7.89 million. Um, I just wanna get clarity with, from John. Does that allow them to uh, assess something less than that if things change it override? Should the language be to assess up to an additional 7.89? Or is the language as it is, is that, will that work? The language as is, Joe, I think works. I think the, the statute itself and the DOR guide uses that language. And the way they interpret that is you're allowed to go up to that amount, but you only, you only levy and collect what's been appropriated by town meeting. So, as long, as long as town meeting appropriates less than that dollar, you're okay. Okay. If they go above, we have a problem. Yep, got it.
So, yeah, so that's a good, that's a great point, Joe. And so, so, John, before you got on the call this evening, we had a resident ask about the procedure, and her question was, you know, how will the moderator do it? And we said, well, we anticipate him doing it line item, line, line item, like, you know, we normally do for Article 6. So, with respect to the potential override, if, let's say, for example, a resident put a hold on cultural recreation and the, the meeting funded half of the proposed amount with respect to the override. So, it would cut the, the 7.8 number down. This number would still be on the ballot, but that cut number would actually be the nu- number amount of the override for that specific item, correct?
Correct. So, the assessors.
Point about up to, would it matter legally? It's just minus that amount of town meeting approved.
It gives the assessors the ability to levy up to that amount, but they only levy what's actually been appropriated by town meeting at the, through the budget process. Got it. So, we need to do a good messaging job, uh, to make sure voters understand, because we don't want someone voting against this ballot, because, wait a minute, it's not consistent with town meeting. So, um, it's gonna be up to us to make sure the message is clear.
Bill, can I clarify Joe's earlier question about personal property? Um, I just called Erin Walsh, the director of assessing, really quick, and she did confirm kind of what John said, that personal property is treated just like your residential, commercial, industrial property, that Hingham has one tax rate for all of those classes of property, and it's included in the general levy, so it's, it's not really treated any differently. The, the override will be, you know, will kind of impact people based on their assessment of personal property, just like it would for the other property classes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so, that, that makes sense. All right. Okay, I was wondering, I've been wondering about that. Joe, that I've been wondering about your point last, uh, last couple of days. Like, if it doesn't say up to, how does it work? But it makes sense to me now. All right, um, Liz, are you comfortable with voting on this?
I am.
All right, Joe, you good?
I am.
All right. Joe, I'm gonna give you a break on the, I'm gonna give you a break with making the motion tonight, because I know your internet connection is a little off, so. I'm making a motion pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21C, and all other applicable laws to place the following question regarding an override on the official ballot for the April 29th, 2023 town election. Question one, shall the town of Hingham be allowed to assess an additional $7,890,467 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose, purposes of funding the operating budgets of the town and the public schools for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and to direct the town clerk to file an attested copy of this vote with the secretary, with the state secretary by March 24th, 2023?
Second.
How low's in favor? Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is two. It's a discussion potential to vote to authorize your motion pursuant to 940 CMR 29.10. I'm gonna keep you on the line, John, and you're gonna, uh, if you don't mind leading us through, uh, changes to remote participation.
Sure. So, the, the special law that's been in effect during COVID expires March 31st of this year. There is a bill at the State House. It's passed both the House and the Senate. Um, I believe it's in a conference committee now to extend that deadline through 2025. So, I'm 99% sure that that's gonna get extended, but we won't know until it passes and the governor signs it. Um, if it does not pass, then we're back to the way it was in the past. All meetings are in person. Um, under the open meeting law, there is an option to adopt, um, remote participation regardless of that special act um, under the regulation. So, I think that's what we're considering, whether Hingham wants to do that, uh, just as a fallback position. Um, if we do this, and if the special act passes the legislature, that would, um, take priority over these regulations. So, we could still use that special act through 2025, but this really is kind of the fallback position. Um, I think what people need to realize, though, is this remote participation under these regulations is not identical to what we've been operating under. Um, that was a blanket authority to have remote participation for everything. Every board member could participate remotely. Uh, the public, it was total remote participation. These regulations are more limited.
Excuse me, John. I, I just have to interrupt. I'm being displaced from the classroom I'm in right now. So, uh, I'm gonna be offline for a little bit, and I'm gonna go back. I'm gonna find another classroom. So, please continue. I'm familiar with this issue. I will back as soon as I can. Thanks.
Good luck. So, under these regulations, um, this would be what I would call limited remote participation. Um, what it really does is it allows certain members of boards to participate remotely if they're unable to attend in person. But you would still require a quorum of the board in person, as well as whoever's chairing the meeting that night would also have to be in person. So, it really, don't think of it as, as kind of continuing what we've been doing under the state law. It's, it's really a more limited version, just in case the state law doesn't continue. My hope is the state law continues and we don't have to worry about it, but we won't know, you know, maybe for another week or so.
God, thank you very much. Couple of questions. How, can you just, so, um, I, I, so I spoke with, um, Senator O'Connor. He indicated to me confidence that it's gonna continue. Um, I kinda wish they would just make it permanent. I don't know why they continue to kick it out. I mean, I don't know why we still playing this game, but, and he agrees with me. I mean, they should kick it out and just make it permanent, right? Like, it, it, everybody likes it. It, it's convenient for board members. Convenient for the public. It's convenient for everybody. Um, but, hey, it is what it is. We did this last year, uh, we, actually, we've done this last two years, um, with the deadlines event. What, what, can you just go over, what, what are the, the, just very briefly, what are the, what are the nuanced differences between the two? Um, like, a majority has to be in person is one of them. Uh, does the chair have to be in person?
Yeah, so think of the other one as pretty much blanket remote, like, everyone can be remote, all the board members, public, like today, right? Let's say we were holding this meeting under these new regulations a month from now. Joe could participate remotely if he happened to be away, but the chair and at least a quorum of the board would have to be in person. So, for the select board, for example, a three-member board, only one could be remote out of the three. And so, it really is a limited remote participation. Um, and it really is intended, and, and what the regulation says is that, um, you would only remotely participate if physical attendance is unreasonably difficult. In other words, you're truly out of state, or you're just unable to make it. It's not for convenience. We're, the way we've been doing it under the special act is really for convenience, and you don't have to justify why you're doing it. So, this is a much more limited remote participation um, process. It, it helps a little bit, but it doesn't get you to where we are now.
Yeah. Um, all right. One other question. One of the things we do now, which I think is wonderful, is we, we can, we kind of switch chairs for the night, like, a couple of times Liz has chaired the meeting when I'm, when I'm traveling for work. Um, can we do that under, under these regulations?
You can. So, it's either the, the, the chair or the person chairing that meeting has to be present, but you can switch that off meeting by.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Last question unrelated. Um, am I correct that all of the outdoor dining, um, provisions that are associated with, um, with the COVID, um, regulations, those are all expired, expiring at the end of the month? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, and the, and this bill that includes this extension through 2025 for the remote participation also extends the outdoor dining, but it does it till April 1st of 2024. Why? I don't know, but the, the draft bill goes a year out on the outdoor dining and two years on the remote participation. So, they're both in the same bit. They're both in the same bill, but it hasn't passed yet, so.
So, the outdoor dining will, will, will go another year?
April 1st, 2024, correct, if it passes.
If, oh, I didn't know that. I thought outdoor dining was done.
No, so, it, I, and I checked with Susan Murphy, because she looked at it online. Uh, we looked at it this, late this afternoon, just to make sure, and there is a provision to do the outdoor dining through April 1st, 2024.
That's the outdoor dining as it is right now?
Correct.
I was unaware of that. It's interesting. Okay.
Yeah, so I can send, I'll, I'll have Susan give us a summary, but that's, they didn't do it through 2025. I don't know why they separated those, but it looks like.
24, so. I, I just had a conversation with a restaurant owner, uh, I was just talking to Tom about it, with a restaurant owner just, uh, this afternoon, who was, um, nervous I was done, but, okay, that's good to know. I, I'll, um, let them know that. Okay. All right.
Of course, each individual owner still has to do their own compliance, but it, it opens the door to it, so.
Okay, so it might be extended. Okay. All right, John, as always, thanks for the great work. I'll leave. Any questions?
Um, yes, just a couple of questions, John. Thank you for this. Um, the limited remote participation that we're talking about, that's our only option, right? This is, we can't have it be any more expansive, okay? And what is the timeframe?
And this, this, and this existed even before COVID. This has been around for a long time.
Okay. So, if we do adopt this, is this for, forever or one year?
The regulate, well, if you adopt it, it stays in effect until you repeal it. So, there's no time on it, but the, the regulations do say that the select board can adopt it and they can repeal it anytime they want. So, it's, it's within control. And the select board has to adopt this for the town. You're the only board that can adopt it for the town. If you adopt it, then all the boards in town can take advantage of it. But you have to, you have to adopt it. They can't do it on their.
Got it, got it. And then if the, um, if this, the, if the state law bill becomes law, that supersedes this?
We would just use that instead. It's, it's easier, it's broader, it's more flexible.
Okay, great. And there are no limitations on the public, um, participating remotely, right?
No, no.
Okay, good.
Now, what would hap- what would happen under this, just, this would be a nuance, going back to Bill's question. Because this requires in-person meetings with at least a quorum of the board, in that case, because you're sitting in a room in a public meeting, the public would have to be allowed to go into that meeting. But you could also allow them to participate remotely.
Okay.
Uh, where now we can do entirely remote. This would be more of a hybrid.
Right. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
And John, the select board's adoption of this, uh, provision, uh, by operational law allows all of our boards in town to, to adopt it as well, correct?
They don't have to adopt it. It allows them to do it as a matter of right. So, once, yeah, yeah, once you adopt, the select board is the gatekeeper. Once you adopt it, it opens it up to all boards to take advantage. And if you repeal it. And if you repeal it, if you repeal it, they're out of luck. Otherwise, they don't have the ability to do it on their own.
Okay, all right. So Tom, if you could just keep everybody apprised of what's going on with the developments here. So all of our, all of our boards know, all of our committees know what's going on so that they don't run a filed meeting law. You guys, everybody did a great job last year keeping it in loop. I know you will, but it just comes so quick, you know? And and come so quick in the legislature for some reason, literally it passes it like like the night before, right?
That's right.
All right. Any members of the public have any question to comments about this agenda item? I'm going to make a motion to authorize remote participation by public bodies of the town of Hingham and quarters with the provisions of nine four zero C M R twenty-nine point ten.
Second.
All the favor, Liz?
Aye.
I mean, I as well, the motion carries. All right, John, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to, sorry, is a discussion and potential vote by the select board acting as the Board of Commissioners regarding the installation of a plaque in boulder at the playground at Powers Field and a discussion and potential vote by the select board regarding the acceptance of a gift of said plaque and boulder. Tom, I know you're gonna give us some background here. Is Michael, we waited for Michael Montero as well?
I just, I just spoke to him on the phone a little while ago. He's actually stuck at his, his kid's basketball game, so I told him I would, I would cover him for it, if if that's okay with you.
It's okay with me. Okay, I mean, all right, I mean, if 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 you think it's efficient, obviously, I know he's put a lot of time, effort and energy into this thing. Okay, I'll leave it to you if you think, if you think we should, you you can go, you can go at it alone.
Yep, I'll give it a shot. To the extent you have questions that I can't answer, obviously, we'll we'll have to, we'll have to bring it back at the next meeting, but. So what's happening is this is the the private group of residents that got together, pooled their efforts, money and time and resources and donated the, in essence, all of the costs associated with the with the new playground equipment over at Powers Field down in Hingham Square. And that was installed and has been up and running for about a year or so now. Everything is going great over there, and Michael is and his group would like to put a memorial plaque on the property at that playground area that just speaks and recognizes the all of the donors along the way, of which there were many. So they're proposing to donate a rock, a boulder, and the plaque itself embedded in the boulder to the town. It would be installed in an area that is not in that is not in the way at all of the ball field and its operations. It would be near too, but not in any way hazardous to the play area. And it would be, and like I said, it would be a donation from the group of residents and no, at no point would it be a cost to the town.
Tom, thank you. Are we able to show the public what it's going to look like?
Michelle, do you have that document?
I can pull it up.
That'd be great. So that, I mean, I know we don't have a lot of people attending this evening, but I know people, a lot of people do watch our meetings after the fact, and it might be good to show people what it's going to look like before we vote on it.
Sure.
Okay, there is.
Maybe zoom out a little, Michelle? Yeah. So that's what that will get embedded. This this, what you're looking at here will get embedded into the boulder.
It's going to be on the boulder.
That's right.
What is, what what are the dimensions of the of this again?
Good question.
I think that's on the next page. If you keep scrolling down, I think the dimensions are next.
Yeah.
When I say dimension, there it is, right there. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and Tom, just to give the public some context, is it fair to say that this is similar in size to what is at the the playground behind Town Hall?
Yes, that's right.
All right, and this is a fair and accurate representation. Here we go. This is great. Keep going. So people can see.
So the proposed rock is the one above?
I just want the public to know this is, I want the public to know this is a giant plaque. Yeah.
Exactly. That's right. That's right.
Right.
And if you keep going down, Michelle, we can see where it's going to be placed. So it would be off to the side over by the parking area for that, for that little playground area, just near to the cemetery and and School Street.
Okay. And the picture you showed above, it's it's a fair and accurate representation of the plaque they're going to put on there, correct?
That's right.
Right. And there were no, 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 there were no concerns from Butters regard regarding the placement of the plaque?
We have not socialized that, so I haven't heard of any. Michael, the most of the donors, I will say, are are neighbors of the park. And they have, their their names will be on it, and they they participated in the in the decision-making on the plaque and its location.
Okay. All right, well, let me, I think Joe's back online. And I'm going to rely on Joe's expertise as the former zoning board chair to ask some questions here. Look, Joe, it looks like you found a new classroom there.
Looks like he's in a science class.
There we go. That's the periodic table behind me. Yes. No, I mean, I've looked at this. I've reviewed it. I really don't have any concerns. I've got no questions on this.
Liz, do you have any questions?
No questions. My only question earlier, which Tom was able to confirm for me, was that I just wanted to make sure it didn't conflict with anything in the proposed naming bylaw, which it does not. So thank you, Tom, for confirming that. I think it's a, it's a wonderful community effort, and I'm thrilled to see this happen.
All right, thank you. Any members of public have any question to comment about this, about this agenda item? All right, Liz, would you mind taking this one?
Sure. I'll make a motion that the select board acting as the Board of Park Commissioners hereby authorizes the installation of a plaque and boulder at the playground at Powers Field in accordance with the project proposal attached here to pursuant to Town of Hingham General Bylaw Article forty, Section three, five, and further that the select board hereby accepts said plaque and boulder as an unconditional gift to the Town of Hingham pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A.
I was second to that motion. All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is appointments. And I've got a couple of appointments this evening. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Matthew Gallagher to the Hingham Industrial and Development Development Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. And I would make a second motion. We'll appoint Bishop Van Buskirk to the Harbor Development Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Any members of the public have any public comment this evening? I see Beth has a public comment. Beth, go ahead. Beth, if you could just state your name and address for the record. I'm going to ask you and your comments this evening, if you could keep your public comments to roughly three minutes. And and go ahead.
Mine's quick. This is Beth Rock off Thirty-Six Pleasant Street again. And I was just wondering when the town calculator that you had promised was going to come be put out since Michelle has done such a nice job putting graphs together, but I know the percentages seem to vary a fair amount as to year by year as starting at about thirteen and a half or thirteen point eight percent now for next year. If you were tallying in the allowed two and a half CPC, those debts that we've already accrued and now and the override if it passes. So I think it'd be very helpful for people to have that information before they go to town meeting so that those that have trouble with adding that debt to their budget would know and be able to calculate it.
Sure, thank you, Beth. I think, Bill, do you mind if I take, take it?
Go ahead. I know, I know it's coming soon, but Tom, do you have a?
Sure. So we had to get through tonight's final vote on the budget numbers, and then the M O U ad con is voting the M O U tomorrow. Then everything at that point, Beth, is completed, and I would hope to be able to bring the the, what do you call it, the calculator online, hopefully Friday, if not Friday, Monday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Beth, thank you. Any members of the public have any other public comments? All right, seeing none, I would turn next to Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Michelle, do you have anything to report this evening?
Nothing, thank you.
Art, anything to report?
Yeah, if I may, I just want to build on that comment about the our override override website and plans to add the tax calculator. That's an important resource that we've been adding to constantly as part of a broader outreach and education effort related to the override. I just wanted to point out progress and a few things for folks to look for going forward. We're in the midst of developing a series of videos that highlight different aspects of the override. We'll provide information, the first of which we expect to release tomorrow and will be releasing weekly over the next five. We are finalizing a mailer intended to send all residents to let them know by mail of our of the availability of our website, the availability of upcoming public information sessions and the opportunity to learn more. And further, we're also preparing two public information sessions. First, March thirtieth at seven P M here at Town Hall, an in-person session as well as a second set for Tuesday, April eleventh at seven P M. That will be by Zoom. The specific login information for that meeting will be posted to our website very soon. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Bill.
All right, turn to the Select Board Reports, Joe.
Raining in San Diego. That's all I got to report.
Wow, that's really, you must be bad luck, Joe. That's not good.
It's not.
Probably said it's probably raining seventy-five, though. Liz, anything to report?
Nothing else tonight. Thank you.
No, it's raining fifty-five.
All right. Wow, sorry to hear that. All right, I have nothing to report. However, before I move on to item thirteen, I want to note for the record that before I entertain a motion to go into executive session under item thirteen of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. Therefore, I make a motion to enter into executive session under Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A six to discuss potential acquisition of real estate and not to reconvene in open session. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. Hope everybody has a good evening. Take care.